Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Tonight's meeting is a public hearing for the proposed With County FY15 revenue and expenditure budget and the public hearing for the proposed With County school budget for fiscal year 15. Before we get started, we do have several people here to speak. If it's individual, you'll have three minutes to speak. If you're speaking for an organization, you'll have five minutes to speak. And this meeting is for public comment only. It's just, we're not getting into question and answer period tonight. Mr. Dalton, the county administrator, I have a short presentation, then we'll get into the public comment. Mr. Dalton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few prepared comments as we start. The information I'll be presenting tonight was prepared by the county staff, Mr. Bruce Grant and others. Hopefully, it'll be a pictorial of the history of the county and tax rate and some other information on how the funding has been spent. Each year brings new challenges as we prepare our county budget. These demands on local revenues are increasing each and every year due to new unfunded mandates provided by the state and federal government. Some of the items in this year's budget that the board basically had no control on is, the first item was healthcare, which was an 8% increase, which resulted in almost a half a million dollars in new required spending by the county. The second item was, in the past years over the, I'll call it recession, the state of Virginia had made a commitment not to raise VRS rates. They had lower revenues based off the money that was put in. This year, the state of Virginia, Virginia retirement system required a 4% increase for all county employees and 3% or better for all school employees. These two new expenditures, which we had no control, we saw with almost $800,000 and $300,000 in new expenditure for a million dollars. Other factors that affected the budget this year included the continued escalation of power costs, fuel costs, other rate increases that we have no control and were, that are required. And as we move forward with school construction, adding air conditioning, others, those things have impacted the cost and performance of what we do. We've got people doing, with great management skills, trying to cut those costs, but with rates increasing, those are fees that we have to address. How do we control these costs while taxes are not increasing? This year's budget included no salary increases for any employees in the county except for those, the people that are mandated by the state to be brought up to a minimum standard over dispatch. Some of the factors that we've had as we get into the budget that made it the most interesting year included the fact that one of the items that was on the board's supervised goal is not to raise taxes this year. I believe we all want better schools, highly motivated teachers, water and wastewater system, better garbage collection, a better public safety, fire and rescue, new jobs, better jobs, higher paying jobs, and other items from medical all the way down to fire protection. I think it's essential that our leaders understand that those wants and goals of the county citizens, and in future years, those things have to be taken into consideration. Budget tonight does not include any of those new items. It has funding only for mandated functions and increases as dictated by others. We include only adjustments in salaries, as mentioned earlier, for those under the state mandated pay scales. Where do we go in the future? As we look at these slides that we'll be presenting to the board and the public tonight, you'll see that our own successes incorporated some of these problems we have with funding some of these instances. First four slides are a depiction of the past 14 years to 15 years of the tax rates in With County. The first slide is the real estate rate, beginning in 2001 and 2002 when we had a rate of 71 cents per 100. The next five years, we had a rate of 53 cents. In 2008, we dropped it to 43 cents, which continued until 2011, which went to 44 cents. The personal property rate in 2001, 2002 was 227. It dropped back to 208 for a period of years until 2013, and was raised back again to the 2001, 2002 level of $2.20, 27 cents. Merchants' capital tax rate, as required by law, was frozen many, many years ago and is a constant rate of 56 cents per 100. Machinery and tools rate has been a constant of $1.50 for the first five years, and it lowers by 20% to a lower rate after the machinery gets five years old. The next slide, Slide 5, depicts the annual tax collections for real estate in With County. As you can see, in 2006, we're collecting slightly more than $7 million, and we peaked in budget 2013 to about $9.4 million, and we're back due to collections and some other items, down to about a $9.2 million budget for real estate. During that period, I guess, of growth in With County, new construction and other items actually fueled the increase in revenues to the county without raising those real estate rates. The next slide, Slide 6, is the personal property annual tax collection for With County since 2006. As you can see, through 2006, 2009, we had a continual increase, 2010, due to some problems and with NADA and others, the values of larger vehicles went down, but then began to climb back up to our current rate of just a little bit less than $4 million that we've budgeted for fiscal year 2015. Machine and tools, annual tax collections are shown, as we've shown on this Slide 7, showing an increase in value up to the year 2010, which reflects in a lot of our larger industries out in the park that we actually landed and located here in 2005, of getting up to the five-year mark and the machinery dropping off to that 20% rate, and has continued to decrease until this year. As you can see, in 2010, we peaked at about 2.9 million. We're around 1.6 million this coming year. Merchants' capital is always one of those things of how much inventory that the merchants keep on stock. Those go up and down on an annual basis during recession years. Those dwindled as they kept less and less stock in the stores and have started to increase again. Public service annual tax collection, and that's railroads, power lines, et cetera, have grown dramatically over the past few years, as you can see with the new number of transmission lines, substation improvements and other improvements to the railroad tracks, et cetera, but that's just a little bit over $800,000. The next slide, Slide 10, is a very interesting slide to me and should wake us all up concerning our tax rates. In 2006, we had, had the local revenues we were funding, took about 80-some percent of local, real estate, personal property, machines, tools tax, and merchants' capital tax to fund the schools, and we had some left, too. Those numbers went down during the peak years of growth in industrial park and out in the county. And currently, those percentages have started rising through the years. Now, it takes not 100% of those taxes to fund the schools, but 110%. So, you're taking money from other avenues that were dedicated for other services, and those tax rates haven't kept up with the requirement to fund the schools. Our best year was at 75%. Now, it takes 110% of those salaries, so we're taking dollars from other sources to help fund those school systems. The next slide is total local revenues. We've been in a fairly even kill, a little bit up and down based off collections on an annual basis, but those local revenues have shown no great increase during the same period of time that we're talking about funding of schools and school construction and the needs of the county. State revenues, as you can see on the next slide, were at a peak during 2011 and actually declined and have started to come back up just a little bit. And some of those concern, revenue things have been directed towards the school for increased cost and for funding that they actually cut during some budget lean years that the county actually funded instead of the local, the state. Total federal dollars, you'll see that if you went back years ago, these, even back to 2000, these have continued to decline, and we're down around a little bit over $5 million of federal revenues. We can expect to see that continue to decline as they change the percentages of money that they pay towards social services to the schools, federal programs, and you're seeing more and more of the state and feds pushing that money and payment back to the localities for making it. The next slide is a pie graph that shows the percentages of the budget from local, state, and federal dollars. And as you can see, that has grown fairly consistent with small decreases. The next slide is the slide that shows local funds to our school system. We were slightly about 11.56 million in 2010, and in this proposed budget year, we're over $15 million, including debt service. I will say that while we're at 15.3 million, plus or minus, those, appropriation for schools, nowhere equals the demand for funding of the schools due to the cuts from the federal government and others and the other mandated services that are out there. The 15.3 is our contribution towards increased debt service and healthcare. We've asked the school system to step forth and take money away from other funding streams to pay for the VRS increase for this coming year. The local revenue budget, which is on the next slide, is just a breakdown of local property taxes and charges as presented in this year's budget. As you can see, real estate makes up for 57.4% of our property tax, 22.7% personal property, machine and tools, 12%, the other around 7.9%. I think what graphically should jump out at us within this budget is that currently, as I look back over the years of how our taxes have changed, 15 or 16 years ago, land use deferment was about 4% of the budget of real estate taxes. Currently, land use deferment is 20% of the budget, a huge increase in deferred taxes for land use. The next item on the slide is a, is a general fund debt per capita. Even though we've been taking on some new debt, that debt per capital, per capita has decreased dramatically over the past year or so due to paving off of some of our debt. The next item, Slide 18, is the percent of local revenue budget going to schools. Even as that number climbs, the percentage compared to our tax rates, which really haven't changed over the years, we're given a higher percentage and more money, but we're doing it with the same amount of dollars almost that we've had in the past due to the tax Mr. Chairman, we have some other slides, but I think that should conclude our presentation. I think what the slides should show, that this board has hard decisions without increased revenues. You've got to make those decisions of how to control costs for these mandated increases and other adjustments into the county budget. It's not going to be an easy one. I think it takes leadership and abilities and to make those hard decisions for board members of how we get this revenue this year to fund these, but next year, it just puts us even further back behind the eight ball with school funding and some other things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, we're going to do a quick summary of the three. Reminding everyone that individual speakers will have three minutes, and if you're speaking for an organization, you'll have five minutes. Mr. Hall will call your name. When you come up, please give your name and your address, please.
And I'll try to keep everybody kind of abreast of their time here. Our first speaker signed up is Linda Diorio.
Good evening. I'm Linda Diorio. Address is 765 Withville Drive, Withville, Virginia. 25 years ago, wise leaders from With County, working with the Virginia General Assembly and using the Industrial Development and Revenue Act, established the Joint Industrial Development Authority of With County as a political subdivision of the Commonwealth of Virginia. One could say it could be viewed the same as the With County School Board, With County Social Services Board, or With County Health Department, county-funded but ended up in a board. Some of you will recognize one or more of these wise leaders who made up the first board. Carl Webb from Speedwell, Thomas Williams from Max Meadows, Peter Miller, John Crowgee Jr., Pete Vires from Max Meadows, and Dr. Jack Baumgartner, and there are dozens of others, men and women, who have generously given of their time as members of the JIDA Board over the years, and their contribution cannot be measured. I think of people like Bill Snyder, Joe Freeman, David Elmore, Danny Gordon, Dick Philippi, and so many, many more. The purpose of the authority created was to promote industry and develop trade. I'm five minutes. The ordinance was approved on November 16, 1989. I'm five minutes. The Fairview Industrial Park began filling up, as did the industrial park in Royal Retreat. Under the leadership of Benny Burkett, plans were put in place for a new industrial site. I remember well that first meeting with Benny, when he had to discuss his vision on how the new industrial park would be developed and how it would be paid. In my job, I was to identify the federal agencies that would help with funding. It was my job to monitor each of the subsequent applications and make sure all red tape was cut to ensure funds. Benny had identified two farms just outside the town limits owned by the Ratcliffe and Southers family, and these properties were acquired for the Board of Supervisors in 1999. With Technologies was the first industry to locate in the park, followed by six other world-class industries providing good jobs to the citizens of With County and surrounding counties. Nearly 1,000 jobs have been created with an investment of over $500 million under the management of the Joint Industrial Development Authority. With County lost two opportunities for advanced manufacturing jobs because we did not have a prepared site to offer, and the projected time to complete a site is three to four years. Subsequently, the Board of Supervisors approved a plan that would provide a large site of 232 acres with a graded pad of 166 acres. This site would include all the amenities desired for advanced manufacturing: redundant electricity, redundant fiber, two water supplies, water treatment, rail siding, natural gas, and much more. When Dr. Hawthorne presenting this plan to the JID Board, we were astounded that it would take three to four years and a cost of 30 to 40 million dollars. Dr. Hawthorne prepared many grant applications and was successful in finding some funding from various government agencies, including the Tobacco Commission, of which I was a member. He navigated numerous hurdles presented by permitting agencies, Corps of Engineers, Fish and Wildlife, Historic Resources, and many, many others. With the near completion of the new site, a strong marketing effort is indeed mandatory. Last year, the JIDA Board met with each of the governing bodies, which made up the authority, and asked if any one of the three jurisdictions were thinking about making a change, and that it would be a good time to make the change since Dr. Hawthorne was considering retirement. We were assured that no changes were being considered, so we moved along with a three-month strategic planning process based on feedback we received from the three jurisdictions. Dr. Hawthorne announced his retirement effective March 31st. The Board of Directors takes their responsibilities very seriously and appointed an executive director effective May 15th. According to Section 3 of the bylaws adopted in January of 1990, the Board of the Directors of the JIDA will appoint the executive director. Members of the JIDA are appointed by each of the three jurisdictions to represent their respective town and county. I know there are some things this board may have done or not done that you do not agree with. Want to go move on?
Continue, lady.
I can assure you without hesitation that you will never find a more honest, hardworking, loyal, or ethical board than the one sitting in your office tonight. The current, I'd like to ask the current board to stand. Bill Dixon, former Vice President of Finance at Withville Community College. Jennifer Atwell, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. Dicky Pack, former employee of CenturyLink. Tom Jones, farmer and businessman. Floyd Patton, business owner of Retreat. David Kous, Regional Transportation Manager for Gatorade. And I have nearly 30 years of experience in economic development, including providing staff work to develop and implement the A Corridor, monitoring and assisting with every grant application submitted by Royal Retreat, Withville, and With County for over 12 years, and a member of the Tobacco Commission, responsible for getting WCC added to the scholarship program and the $6.5 million in funding for Progress Park. All this having been said, if you're unhappy with the board, you can replace us. If you're unhappy with the new executive director, I implore you to give him a chance. He is highly educated, with a degree from the University of Virginia and graduate work from the University of South Carolina. He ran a successful business. He was one of the founding members of the Young Professionals that has grown over 50 young professionals from With County alone. He served two terms on the Chamber of Commerce Board and chaired the county's tourism committee and chaired the With County Public Schools Foundation for Excellence. He deserves nothing less than a chance. Someone said he was too young. By the way, he's 38. There is so much more to the work of the IDA than marketing. There's existing industry needs and possible expansion, workforce development, assistance for small business, and by the way, the Small Business Development Center is housed in the IDA complex. With County has been the model for economic development highlighted by numerous awards. I ask you today to think individually how wrong it is to dismantle and throw away an organization that has been successful, working in partnership with With County, the town of Withville, and the town of Royal Retreat for over two decades. I understand that the Board of Supervisors vote was unanimous to not include the JID in your 2015 budget. I want to look at each one of you, Gary, Steve, Artie, Tim, Joe, Coy, and Jean, and ask you to reverse your vote and include the organization that has With County for 25 years to greatness. Thank you very much.
Artie, I'll give you a few of those minutes back. One thing she forgot to say, and I told her to say it, is she has no personal interest in this. In fact, her term on that board expires at the end of the month. But what I want to talk about is ancient history that pertains to what you did, what you are planning to do. Forty-plus years ago, I was a member of the Withville J.C.s, and we went to the Town Council of Withville to complain about their wanting to become a city, withdrawing from With County and becoming a city. They could do that back then. Other people did that, and they reversed. And then what happened as a result of all this is we began to get these county-town meetings every three months. And I've noticed over the past 45 years, and I was proud to be part of that, what we did, I've noticed a tremendous amount of cooperation between town and county, and I surely ain't going into all that, but the Joint IDA is one example. Progress Park is another example. If you make the move to withdraw funds from the Joint IDA, you are going to be taking a giant step backward.
Our next speaker is Ann Manley.
Ann Manley, 1774 Ivanhoe Road, Max Meadows, Virginia. For the last nine months, I've tutored a student in civics. The whole year, we've discussed citizenship and its responsibilities. Some of the responsibilities are voting, serving on jury duty, and speaking out when something's wrong. I've spoken out one other time. That was against the prison. I'm speaking out again tonight because I feel like defunding the JIDA is wrong. It's counterproductive to local government cooperation. Years of working to develop close relationships have been damaged by this board's action. With County is not prepared to take over economic development. Why reinvent the wheel? The JIDA has staff, has staff in place to market the assets of the county, Withville and Royal Retreat. The new executive director is a lifelong resident of With County with a love for the area and its people. He is well-educated, articulate- He is well-educated, articulate, forward-thinking, and has a great vision for the future. I was very disappointed to be told by a member of this board, "We wanted someone older." Does older mean someone who has better ideas or someone who works harder? I was told that the county wanted someone with experience. I have a question for the supervisors and the county administrator. How many of you had experience at being supervisors before you were elected? Mr. Dalton, were you a county administrator before being hired to that position in With County? If you weren't given a chance, none of you would be in the position you are today. The JIDA was developed out of the recognition that it is in the best interests of everyone in the county and towns to have a joint effort and a united front in securing With County's economic future. Now, I have the sections that Ms. Diorio has already talked about, so I'll skip down. The board is comprised of seven members from all walks of life. They unanimously chose their new executive director. I was told the JIDA did not do what we wanted them to do. That sounds to me like the bully in the sandbox who says, "Play my game, or I'll take my marbles and go home," or in this case, "I'll not fund the JIDA. You have a chance to repair damage that has been done." On the social media today, I saw something that reminded me of this situation. Three words, and I'll say them: choice, chance, change. In this case, you need to make a choice to give the JIDA a chance to help make a change for With County's future. We deserve that. Thank you.
My name is Paul Rick, and I live at 155 West Wind Drive, Max Meadows, Virginia. I'm a small business owner, and I depend on tourism. Now, I understand that we're no longer interested in tourism, and we don't need a downtown, but we're going to focus on manufacturing. But you're going to cut funding for those that focus on manufacturing and turn this function over to a county economic committee. Now, one of the supervisors said that this committee hadn't done anything in 20 years. One committee member said they hadn't met in three years. Folks, I think this is just success written all over it. As a former Vice President of Manufacturing with 20-plus years' experience, I started up new plant operations and bankruptcies, bankruptcy turnarounds, and I can draw only one conclusion: We do not have good government here. We've got a soap opera. You can point your finger.
Hold on one second, Ms. Herrick. We're trying to have a public meeting and public comments. Please don't interrupt the speaker when he's speaking, please.
We can place blame, and we can point fingers, but you can't cover up poor management. This mess, coupled with the Rescue Squad debacle, has damaged our reputation tremendously. We're on TV more than the Andy Griffith Show, and it's all negative. That makes the county look narrow-minded and backward. Can you imagine the hospital trying to recruit a new doctor? Young people? Why would they come here? Why would they stay here? We need new and progressive county leadership. The citizens of this county deserve better than we're getting. Folks, if you agree with me, would you please stand up?
Okay, our next speaker is Nancy Bernicki.
I'm just asking you gentlemen to please fund the JID and let it get on with the work of the people. Our county and its citizens deserve JIDA working for us, not the Board of Supervisors taking us back decades. I really feel it helps with our economic growth, and With County deserves better than what looks like, I don't know, at best a power grab and at worst a partisan political act. If you really feel that we can't afford this, then maybe Mr. Dalton or anybody can come up with some documentation, some reasons why this money isn't well-spent to develop this area, and where is the money going to go? Please fund the JIDA. We need it here. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening. You know, a wise man once said, "You don't change a horse midstream," but you guys have killed the horse midstream before you even get on another one. You have on page 100 of this budget 9.743123 million dollars for something related to this Lot 24. I don't know what it is. It wasn't on there on the last proposed budget, but on this document, it shows some expenditure for 9.7 million dollars and debt servicing for 424 dollars for Progress Park. And you're kneecapping the Joint IDA, who's supposed to help you develop this and make money for that. Not only that, you're adding new salaries. You're paying $12,000 for a law clerk, for the judge. You got a fire marshal. You got With County EMS. I guess it's the public safety officer. We have an engineering salary increase of $36,000. If we can afford all that, why can't we fund the Joint IDA? And why can't we market that lot? And why are we throwing even more money at it? Where does it end? Was that 35 million dollars that we've paid so far? You're going to double down with another dime?
Next speaker is John Davis.
John Davis, 621 Francis Mill Road, Cripple Creek. Twenty years ago, I sat, in fact, I sat where one of my former students sits now, Artie, on this board. And I realize and I know there are hard decisions to be made, but I want to take just a few seconds and tell you about a decision. During the time I was on the board, Klockner came to us and said they would double the size of their facility if we would give them a break on the machinery tax. Since the building wasn't completed, to tax them on the machinery didn't sound like a good idea. But I could not convince the fourth person. Incidentally, folks, this board is important for people. You have to have four people to patrol it. So I sat down with one of the members, and I said, "Listen," I said, "you ever hear that story about out in the desert, a man comes upon a well, a pump, an old hand pump, and it has a jug of water on it and a note? And it says, 'You can drink this water, or you can prime this pump. Prime this pump, and you can have all the water you want. Fill the bottle for the next traveler.'" We need to prime the pump. And priming the pump means you are going to have to spend some money. And you do not wipe out a complete organization, particularly when they are looking at some new ideas. I looked in the census records. With County's census in 1930 population was 20,000, but it jumped by 1990 all the way up to 25. You are not going to bring a large industry into this county. You need to start looking at tourism. You need to start selling With County. Every evening on Channel 7 and Channel 10, they have a special on Floyd or Finn Castle. I've never seen one on With County, and we have so much to offer. We have our parks, the Foster Falls Park and the New River Trail, the Rory Treat Lake, the Mount Rogers Horse Trail, and the Edith Bowling, birthplace and the work that's being done on that. The county needs to come together. The county needs to prime the pump. If you don't prime the pump, some fool will come along and drink the water.
The next speaker is Donna Bishop.
Thank you, ma'am.
And next speaker is Jody Fiorini.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm going to wing it, and it's hard to follow some of these folks in here. But first of all, I know that we're discussing adding a fire marshal and an attorney, so I'm going to kind of lump those together. I've worked construction for many years, as I understand it, we don't really need a fire marshal until there is final construction to sign off on a building. We have a building inspector. They do that, then the fire marshal comes in and signs off. What will a fire marshal do in between the times when there's no CO going out to a building? What will he be doing? We're going to pay a salary and benefits for someone to do nothing in the meantime when we can bring someone in to, you know, sign off and that's it? We don't need a full-time position for that. Attorney, the same thing. What do they do in the meantime when you're not using them? When you hire local attorneys, you're putting the money back into the local economy, you're using the professionals in this community, and then when you're not using them, you're not married to their salary. The other issue that I'm having is totally disagreeing with the trash, what you're not calling a property tax, $100 fee. As I understand it, that fee is going to be imposed on property owners at property tax This, if you go forward with this, it needs to be like a utility. If you use the service, then you pay for the service. Property owners in this town or this community in this county can no longer take everything on. Property taxes keep going up. They're all due at the same time, but it's going to be these people's responsibility to get the money back from renters if they have rental property. They're going to have to pay it on multiple buildings if they're unoccupied. If you're going to impose it, make it a service, make it a utility that everybody pays for, and stop passing it on to property owners. And do not say it's not a property tax, then put it on the property taxes. That's also going to give you the right to do what you do when people don't pay. Are you going to lien their homes, warrants in debt? What are you going to do? It's unfair, and it's unrealistic. Think outside the box, gentlemen. Joint Industrial Development Authority, huge mistake, 25 years undone. We'll be competing with ourselves within the town of Withville and within the towns of Rory Treat. I would like to remind you, people in town, pay county taxes. We deserve county funding for the Joint Industrial Development. If our downtown does good, industry will come here. No one wants to come to a community where we're not providing anything for them to do. Businesses do not bring executives into communities where there's nothing for their family, where there's no shopping, no service industry, you know, no good education. You all are making a huge decision in canceling the JIDA. David Manley, I do know him personally, and I know Linda Diorio personally. You all are killing a great team here. So much experience. It's a fabulous thing, and you need to give it a chance.
Next speaker is Shane Terry.
Shane Terry, 810 East Liberty Street. As a native and current resident of the East Withville District, I am currently employed at Wolford House Dinner Theater as Director of Marketing and Group Sales. I serve as Vice President of the United Way of With County, on the Chamber Tourism Board, operate my own small wedding planning business, and serve on the Steering Committee of the Withland Young Professionals as a charter member. After residing in New York City for three-plus years, Palm Beach, Florida for one, and numerous other locations around the country, I chose to return to With County. Both sides of my family are here. Now, there's a wonderful facility where I work that allows me to use my talents on a day-to-day basis, and wonderful people in this area that I get to work and communicate with that I want shared hallways and lockers with. When approached to help conceive the Young Professionals group, I jumped at the opportunity. I am one of seven people, all from this county, that have all moved away, lived in metropolitan areas, and chose to return to their home. We wanted to prove to others in our age bracket that they could do the same thing, that the young professionals in this area are valued and that their opinions matter, as well as affecting positive change in the community in which we live and pay taxes. We were all so pleased and excited about the new appointment of David Manley as Executive Director of the JIDA, a man with his hand on the pulse of the community, only to find out six days after being on the job that the Board of Supervisors pulled the proverbial rug out from under him without even giving him a chance to prove himself. I've heard many reasons for this decision, none of which I agree with, but when it came to light that at least one board member thought that he was, quote, "too young to hold that position," I, as well as many others, took this as an absolute slap in the face. What message is this sending to my age demographic? Don't come back to With County. You aren't old enough to matter anyway. I ask you to reconsider and reserve and reverse this terrible unilateral decision that you have made and continue to fund the JIDA in fiscal year 15. The JIDA is a proven institution with a great reputation and the foresight to go far, with David Manley at the helm. I made the conscious decision to return to my home. Please don't make me regret that decision by being the elected officials that prove, in fact, you can never go home again. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Next speaker is Sam Crockett.
I feel kind of out of place here. I just want to talk about the budget. I'm sorry. But Sam Crockett at 875 North 10th Street in Withville. I know the state hasn't passed their budget, the Senate's still holding out, but I feel that the board needs to consider the cost of living for the, some employees, the lower pay grade people, you know, they need to have a pay raise, especially the low-salary people. Everything's getting more and more expensive, and it's been a while since they've had a decent cost-of-living adjustment. Considering increases in insurance and VSR are good, but that doesn't cover the everyday cost of living. The last time that they had a decent raise, most of it was eaten up by VRS, I think 4.5% or something, not take-home pay. These people helped carry the load of With County, and I think that these lower-income people definitely need a cost-of-living increase this year, and I hope you'll give it some consideration. Thank you.
I'm Don Alexander. I live at 190 Eagle Drive. I'd like to second the concerns of the various speakers that have spoken relative to the Joint Industrial Development Authority. I've had the pleasure through the years of my career to observe many of the companies that were coming to consider With County. Wouldn't try to get into the specific ones who did come here. I did work with several of them after they chose to come here. Those things just don't occur. Those things just don't occur by accident. It takes planning and some careful leadership. And the Joint Industrial Development Authority is certainly important in carrying out that function of meeting with and recruiting industry and other economic opportunities for our region. The second thing that I'd like to speak on would be the trash fee. I know you're not answering questions, but I'd like to raise questions that I hope will be taken down and taken into consideration. How will the trash fee apply to town citizens who pay the town fee and do not use the county's convenience centers? I'm thinking particularly of individuals who may not have pickups to carry theirs out, as I do, and I'm not concerned for myself, the $100, just another dip out of retirement, you know, we can take an 100 here and 100 there and so on, nobody'll notice it. But at the same time, the double fee that could be imposed because town citizens who have the town pickup their trash have to have a decal for that. So we need to really consider that, and it could put a hardship on some individuals. The other question on it, will the fee apply to all households, or will it apply only to real estate owners? In other words, will rented households share in the cost of the use of the convenience centers? And then, of those who do pay for the fee, how will these individuals be identified when they get to the convenience center to assure that they're allowed to trash, put their trash out, and how will the others be prevented? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Andy Kegley is our next speaker.
Good evening, Andy Kegley, 840 Rose Hill Road, Withville. Feels like deja vu here with a lot of old colleagues, John Davis and folks, good to see them. Working for an organization whose name is helping overcome poverty resistance, you take it as an article of faith to defend low-income households wherever, whenever barriers are thrown up to prevent them from building equity and accumulating wealth. This budget is an assault on low-wealth households in With County and wrong for more than one reason. While I realize and hope there may already be misgivings on the proposed solid waste tax, and that it's subject to a separate ordinance hearing later on this month, it is a highly regressive tax and amounts to an 18% increase in property tax for some low-income homeowners. But first, I don't understand the motivation for needing this 1.2 million, or whatever it is, to be collected from the county's 12,000-some households. Your spokesperson was quoted in the paper as saying, "The price of hauling trash has gone up considerably." That's disingenuous at best, as over the last five budget cycles, if I read your county's website right, refuse collection budgeted expenses are only up 3%. It is true that from last, from this year to next, you're projecting a 17% increase in expenses, but that's a budgeting problem. Don't put the burden of needing to cover a $200,000 increase in refuse collection expenses on the 12,000 households by generating 1.2 million. Furthermore, here's the regressive problem. Take any of the last 30 homes that we've been privileged to build at Hope, in either of our two subdivisions for working households. Assume a value of 125,000, with the present levy of 0.44, the tax bill comes to $550. Collect it and pay it most times through the homeowner's monthly escrows. They never see the annual tax bill unless there's an increase, which hasn't happened recently, but now they will get the refuse collection tax bill of $100. Add that to the 550 already out of their pocket, and their real estate and solid waste tax bill just increased 18%. If you wanted to increase real estate taxes to 18%, you would set the levy right now at 52 cents, which I don't think would be very palatable. This comes at the time of the year when energy costs rise and the holiday, and also during the holiday season. $100 is a big deal anytime, but particularly at the end of the year. I'd be remiss if I didn't say a word to the economic development strategy falling apart in this budget as well, as it has disproportionate bearing on low-wealth households as well. I'm not sure there are very many people who can explain all the financing involved with the development of Lot 24 in Progress Park. Linda did a really nice job of putting some context to it. And who can summarize for us the annual debt service on that particular lot development, nor the opportunity cost from where those funds might have been better utilized to support the quality of life and services for current residents of the county. Reading the pages of the county budget proposal makes no sense, as annual expense for Progress Park and the JIDA continues to climb from 4.8 million FY11 to over 10 million FY15, totaling some 28 million if my math is right, and all through the tail end of a harsh recession. You want, and you want to redirect existing personnel to market this investment, when presumably they already have their hands full with their day job. Can you honestly look in the eye of any new prospective homeowner and tell them that withholding $153,000 from the JIDA is in their best interest, when you're sitting on millions of reserves and tens of millions in an empty flat speculation? Thank you.
Next speaker is Scott Martin.
I'd like to thank you all for taking time, for having us come out tonight. My name is Scott Martin, I live at 7801 Pepper's Ferry Road, Max Meadows, Virginia. I am a local entrepreneur and business owner of a medical supply company and a recent fire protection company. I'd like to express my concerns to the board about recent developments about the Joint Industrial Development Authority, give you a little background about where I'm coming from with this. I am a lifelong citizen of With County. I grew up here, went to school here, graduated from Virginia Tech, and went to go serve in the federal government. After I came back, I came back with the intent to open up my own business, which I have done, in fact, opened my second business. I find that the Joint Industrial Development Authority is a group that brings in not only customers that I have picked up, but also new potential for employees, for county citizens, as well as increasing the tax base and generating much-needed revenue for the county. The ability to cut out this group and defund this position is a travesty that I think all county citizens feel rightly justifying and criticizing, knowing that this position is a value-added position that brings forward a lot of new opportunities, a lot of very interesting and great opportunities for new businesses coming in, also hopefully developing new structures and enterprises, not only for small businesses, hopefully for a small business incubator, if that could ever be done, but also to increase small business participation in the community. I think the Joint Industrial Development Authority's mission is changing, as it should, as any organization that tries to meet the growing needs of the community should and will meet as they look forward. I know from my part, my family and my community are looking forward to continuing to grow, and I hope to add to that. I hope that you guys take the opportunity to reverse your decision, fund the Joint Industrial Development Authority, bring this position into the future, give it an opportunity, much like any other organization, if it doesn't do good by a, within a year, review it then, but give this man an opportunity to see what he can do for us, and see what this organization can do for the future of With County. Thank you.
Pass. Mary Siscastle.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, county administrator, I am here tonight to speak to you on behalf of our Electoral Board and the funding. We do appreciate the funding that you have already been willing to provide for us for the 2014-15 year. However, we do wish to express that our concern is over the zero funding of our replacement of the voting machines. I have reviewed the last several budget submissions. On each of these, there has been a request to establish a sinking fund for the purpose of machine replacement. These requests have not been funded. Due to the fact that our voting machines are 19-years-old, it was determined that in our current budget request, it would be necessary to include the entire total cost of replacing all voting machines. This expense totaled some $100,000. The reason being for this replacement of these 19-year-old machines, the supporting of current hardware has become increasingly difficult, and parts are no longer manufactured. Programming software has been discontinued and is no longer supported by Microsoft. Ballot printing availability is very limited due to the ink specifics, to the weight and the reflectance of the stock, meaning that they are very limited in who will do the printing of our ballots and how long that will continue. Machines cannot be certified for recounts by the Commonwealth of Virginia due to their age. Therefore, recounts must be done by hand, as was evidenced by the past Attorney General election. The Commonwealth of Virginia has certified the use of only three types of voting machines. Our current board has attended demonstrations given by two of these three, and shall be attending the third vendor's demo within the next two weeks. It is not a matter of if there would be a problem with a voting machine on election day, simply when will this occur? Please reconsider our request and prevent this very unpleasant experience from happening. With County and its Electoral Board could be embarrassed by not planning properly for future elections. We therefore respectfully ask that you revisit this budget request and fund the purchase of the With County voting machines. Thank you, and I forgot to tell my name. I'm Mary Siscastle, and it's at 205 St. Luke's Road, Withville, Virginia. I would also, as a citizen, like to express that I do have support for the Joint IDA. I do not feel that the trash collection fee is, as it should be, as far as, I would like for you to revisit it and rethink your voting on both of those issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sis. Our next citizen is Bobby Dirks.
I'm Bobby Dirks, at 660 West Washington Street in Withville. While companies and industries all over the country have been cutting back for years, our county government keeps increasing year after year. 2014 had a new assessment that increased revenue. Last year, 2013, the personal property taxes were raised 19 cents. A few weeks ago, you changed the way vehicles are taxed, and I feel sure that that will mean an increase in personal property again. Now, the county is proposing a $100 fee for each household in the county that gives the residents nothing but an additional fund of $1 million-plus to the county government. The proposed water increase is 39%. You want to add an additional personnel, and I feel it is unnecessary. I also would like to know who you have on staff to do industrial development. I personally don't know who that would be, which means that you would likely have to add someone additionally to hire for that job. My thoughts is that the IGA, excuse me, the Joint IDA, needs to be funded by the county. In my opinion, we would not have the industries that we have if it had not been for Alan Hawthorne and his staff. I think they do a great job, and although you may not like the new director and you want to take control, that isn't a real reason for not to fund the Joint IDA. Additionally, I think each of you need to ask yourself if you really think the citizens of With County can afford all these increases. Thank you.
Donnie Bales, our next citizen.
My name is Donnie Bales, I live at 575 Tazol Street in Withville. I grew up in Smith County, but was always in With County. My father worked at Camret Logistics with Mr. Willis, and I always looked up to Withville, With County. Just thought I had amazing potential. It just kept growing and growing. I'm a small business owner. I started my business out in Colorado, and I was looking to move it, and I thought, gosh, Withville would be the perfect place to live, because it's just on the brink of something. Many advances in business, thanks to the JIDA. And I got here, and I heard about the decision to elect David Manley as the new Executive Director and the new board, and I can't tell you how excited this town was about that decision. People that had no idea who David Manley was, a lot, everyone said, "Did you hear? Withville's gonna do something, they're gonna, they're gonna grow, they're gonna do something." And then, I understand that six days later, the decision was made to cut the JIDA. I am deeply disappointed in this. As a young business owner, it seems like maybe this board doesn't want growth in Withville. Maybe they don't want businesses to come, and businesses aren't gonna come if these are the decisions that we're making. They don't wanna come to a town that's dying. You're not solving the problem, you're just putting a Band-Aid on it. So I urge you to please fund the JIDA. And I heard that one of the decisions was maybe because he was too young, and I urge you to consider that you need young people. Young people are the innovators. Rockefeller was barely out of college when he started working, so just think about that, and please, please, please fund the JIDA. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lee Brandon.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, Mr. Reeves, rest of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Dalton. I would just like to come and say that since 2009, state funding has been on a decline. I know Mr. Dalton's slide on the last three years has shown an increase in state funding, but as he mentioned, along with that, there have come mandates and increases in the Virginia retirement system, health insurance cost increase that really eat up that. We have cut approximately 28 positions over the last five years, trying to assist in going through that, and I would just like to say thank you for your support that you've given to help us not meet everything we've actually needed, but we've always worked together in trying to work out the needs of the school system. The demands have been large upon the school system, the monetary demands have been large. We haven't always received all the money that we needed. It hasn't always gone the way we wanted to, but we work together collaboratively, which is what's best for the students in With County Public Schools. And as far as funding, you know, whatever avenues that you need to take to invest in our children in With County is a wise investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brandon. Our next speaker is Ann Dees.
Ann Dees, 971 Sanders Mines Road, Max Meadows. I'll be brief. I'm here to support the JIDA. I think the decision to not fund it is a very short-sighted decision. We've heard, I can say, ditto to so much of what has been said. But I also wish to address the fact that you have a younger generation of leaders that you're saying no to, when you don't support David Manley. He's very talented, he's very strong in what his knowledge is, and will be a very innovative, creative experience. You have a second audience that you're trying to attract, and that's industry. But if industry looks here and sees that we have a Board of Supervisors that isn't open to creativity and innovative approaches, they're not gonna come to With County. It's time to experience some change and some new ideas, and I think David is the person who can do that for you. So please, restore the funding, most, if not all, of the funding, and find a way to work it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Meyer.
Linda Meyer, 1118 Dry Road in Speedwell. Boy, you guys really stepped in it with that remark about youth. That was not good. It's too bad people are taking that so personally. I printed out all 113 pages of the budget, and I viewed it as I would my own household budget, and I did a lot of highlighting. Once again, the county is spending over $23,000 in dues to national and state organizations. And as far as I'm concerned, that is very, very excessive. You can go on the computer and monitor newsletters and so on. I don't think anybody's gonna take away With County if you guys don't join, or some office within the county does not join their national or state organization. And then also on page 100, with Progress Park, it also says dues, and it indicates another $30,000. So that would be over $53,000 in dues to state and national organizations for a year, and that is... and that is excessive. Also, I went page by page, and I was just horrified at a lot of the things, such as the increases in uniforms for people and the increases in supplies, unclassified supplies, office supplies, and the whole nine yards. I think somebody should sit down and do a lot of highlighting. All these little $700 here, $1,000 there, 1,700 here, it's all compounded, and it's a great deal of money, and it means a great deal of our resources, which the taxpayers don't have. Our resources are not increasing, and we can't afford this, and there are things here that are not necessary. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sharon King.
My name is Sharon A. King, 5033 Wesley Highway, Withfield, Virginia. I am here to speak on the, where you're going to raise the taxes on our green boxes. Well, if you do that, what's going to happen is people are going to start throwing their trash out in the road or over any kind of bank they can find because they're not going to care. Our highway up on Wesley Highway is kept clean and neat, and we're proud of our highway. But once you all do something like this, just like you got your head in hot water over the water, and this is what's got you in all this trouble, you're in the red because you can't pay the federal government back where you borrowed the money, and you've got to put it on the taxpayer. Well, we're sick and tired of it. Why don't you go build a new nursing home so you can put all of us in it where you're giving us a heart attack and stroke trying to keep up with this dumb stuff? Now, I mean, we are all sick of it. Now, I'm not picking up somebody else's trash. Now, you need to rethink the water, you need to rethink this trash stuff. We got along fine before you all started doing this dumb stuff, and I'm sick of it now. So, this is all I've got to say at the moment. Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Blair.
Gentlemen, my name is David Blair. I live at 350 Lakeview Drive, Withfield. I came here this evening primarily with lots of questions. I've had some of them answered by County Administrator and some of the folks that have spoken. I still have tons and tons of questions, and let me tell you something. I don't envy any of you the task ahead of you. I mean, I've done what you've done. I've made a few budgets, and they're tough, but I will take exception to a lot of the things that I think you're in the process of doing. And first and foremost, I agree with probably most of the people in this room, and my history with public hearings is that if there's a number of people here, there's a lot more on the outside that agree with them. And so, I would state initially that I think it's a very shallow move to do away with the Joint Industrial Authority that has been instrumental in building the tax base of With County. You know, I'm the old guy now, but at one time, I was one of these young people like these guys are, and I had ideas, and I believed in doing things, too. Now, you know, we need to have young people involved in making decisions, absolutely. But I think about 15 years ago, there was no Pepsi, there was no Gatorade, no Amscow. Now, I don't know, I'm sure Mr. Dalton can answer this, but you know, how much do they add to our tax base? That's what we have an industrial authority for. Now, I'm a small business owner. I also own rental property, have a business here, and also have a, also have a business, small business in Washington County. So, I'm in Smith and Washington County every week, and I want you to know that we in With County are the envy of southwest Virginia. Gentlemen, I don't know if you all realize that, but you are bound to understand that people look at us and go, man, wouldn't we love to have what they got? You're going to, you know, take away the industrial authority, $153,000, if I understand right, and we're talking about millions. What's the total budget? So many million and that. I think we can find that. Now, I think that's a no-brainer. You all can find that, and I don't know who's qualified to be in that position, but as I said, you all have done a lot. You all have done a lot in funding them. So, you know, I think you should continue to do that. I know we've only got a few seconds left, but I think you're making the wrong approach. If you're going to raise taxes, and if you've got to do it, call it a tax. Call it what it is. Don't hide behind something that's going to be used in another way. Everybody has their different ideas about taxes, but if it's a tax, call it a tax. I may have a lot of other things I would say, but I don't have the time. I thank you.
Thank you, David. Next speaker is Nancy Throckmorton.
I'm a resident of Century Court in Meadows and Pine Ridge here in Withfield. I'm here tonight to talk about your tax rate on trash collection at the green boxes. I own three pieces of property here in town. Am I going to be taxed $100 on each piece of property? My first piece of property is my residence. My second is an unoccupied house. My third one is a duplex. I can't imagine charging my tenants $50 a month to the rent. One of my tenants is getting government assistance. I can't imagine applying for that because I have trouble even collecting on other things. I do not go along with this proposal if I'm going to be charged $100 on each piece of my property. I appreciate being here tonight and consideration for this. Thank you.
Alethea Neal is our next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Alethea Neal. I reside at 1155 West Union Street here in Withfield. I am originally from this area. I graduated from George With. I went to college away and stayed away, lived in Washington, D.C. for several years. My husband and I, he's from that area, decided to raise our family here. I spend a lot of time looking at past budgets, reading old minutes, and trying to make sense of what this is, and your job is hard, as is most people's job when it comes to budgeting anything. Your proposed budget of 98.7-plus million dollars has some things in it that I don't understand. I don't understand why we need $100 per year trash fee added to our property tax bill. I know for me, I'm a stay-at-home mom of four children. To add this to our real estate at the time that you want to collect this would be a burden to us, as probably the majority of the households in this community. Doesn't seem like much when you factor it in. Look at better use of recycle. Everywhere else when you go in a metropolitan area, even if you go a little farther north in the state of Virginia, they have better recycle facilities. Look into an incinerator. Why do we need a public safety director and a fire marshal? Will hiring attorney decrease and increase the amount of currently spent on legal matters? You're proposing $116,000-plus dollars for that. I think that would take care of the machines for voting. Healthcare is a great concern for all of us. I understand that you want to provide that as a service to your employees, but across the board, small businesses and major industry are cutting those costs. To have somebody pay any amount of it is a big, big relief of burden. Also, With, Mr. Davis being here, this is, he's why I'm here. I took his AP Government class, and ignorance of the law is never an excuse. It is our right to be here and be a part of this process. I'm here to help. I'm not here to say that you're wrong, you're wrong, you're wrong, you're wrong, you're wrong, but we are in this together, and if we do not take these things into consideration properly, we will not bring in the industry that you want. You have 29,000-plus people, and since 1930, we've grown 9,000. That's pretty sad. What are unclassified supplies? 10,000 for what? What advertising do you all need 10,000 more dollars for? Why do we need another water and wastewater project that totals over $15 million? Main Street's still torn up from the last one. Think in terms of the JIDA. I look back and read a lot of 10-years-ago-plus meetings, minutes. We do need to focus more on developing our downtowns. People want to come to southwest Virginia because it's a slower pace. We don't have to worry about the hustle and bustle as much. We don't have to worry about, is our neighbor going to steal from us? Maybe there's some cases like that, but most of the time, a neighbor's willing to help. We're neighbors, we have to help each other. You cannot look and think that defunding things that are bringing progress will be the solution. You need to work together. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Renee Blessing-Klein. You're not going to speak? The next speaker is Michelle Chapman.
She's not going to speak.
Ms. Chapman?
Okay.
Liza Field?
I'm Liza Field. I'm from town, 360 West Ridge Street. I agree with some of the speakers on the solid waste cost, although I do, you know, taking all this in and seeing some of those slides, it's really clear that you have increasing costs to cover. That's your job, and nobody wants taxes raised, and everybody wants the old services and projects funded. But I think there's one way that we can, I know that solid waste does have a huge cost, and it's going to just keep increasing because landfills keep filling up, and we can't, we have to have regulations for landfills because those people that live in those communities don't want toxic stuff leaking into their water. That wouldn't be fair to them, so that costs more for, to keep those landfills under the regulatory code. We pay, we cost. We raise those costs every time we throw out a bag of trash. I think if this were explained, if there were a fair way to do it, I think people would feel less resentful about it and more proactive. So, if you levy a flat fee on the property owners, there's little Mrs. McGillicuddy, maybe a widow, and she has five tuna cans and some tissues to throw out each week, and she, maybe she has some rental property, she's paying for people that throw out big truckloads. You can see them at the collection centers, and many people do not recycle, as one of the other speakers noted. I think that about 18-years-ago, I'm not sure, it's been so long, it just is a blur, but the town had to close its landfill. So, we had that problem in the town. Town set up a, I think Trent Crew is here and probably remembers, we set up a Citizens Committee. We had a solid waste forum in town. We brought down the guys from Salem. Salem had just implemented a bag and tag system where residents would pay a dollar per bag of trash, very simple system, and recycling was for free. I think that would be more fair. You've already got the collection centers manned, they're already staffed, that system is set up. You know, it's just, otherwise, otherwise, people are going to feel it's unfair. This would be more of a market-based incentive to recycle. It would be using the market, that's a very conservative idea, and I think it's a very conservative community. Nobody wants waste, and I think people, once they got used to it, would be glad to recycle. And that allows them to lower their own cost, and it would lower the trash cost for the county, and that's a very real cost that we do have to pay for. I appreciate that.
And David Blessing is our next speaker.
Well, I appreciate the time and opportunity to come down here and thank you all. My name is David Blessing, 500 Bald Tree Road, Withfield, Virginia. And you know what? I've sat here and I've listened to all this. I retired from Yellow Freight, delivered freight all over the place here locally. At one time, she remembers, we come down there in Amscow, there was 26 truck lines come in here. We have seen our jobs go from here to overseas. Your industrial parks and everything's great. Young people are great. But I'm going to tell you, to this nation, y'all might not want to hear it, turn to back to God. And you put honest people in Worcester, D.C., in our counties, you have just seen part of what's going to happen. My daddy, when I was a little kid, had his own trucking business, and he told me through this barium, this, all this other stuff that's going on, this nation was going to blow up. We didn't believe him. I wish he was living today. You're talking about cost cuts, Mr. Brandon. I think you over the school systems, ain't you? You know what? When we went to school, Tim remembers it, there was no air conditioners in it. I mean, it was hot, but we made it. How much do the cost resource officers to stay up at them schools? I got a sister that taught up at the school, and I'm not being ill. Girl, you probably know, how many kids turn them schools up? I don't mind helping nobody if they help themselves. But boys, when you took the paddling out of schools, when you took the bibles out of school, you see what society's created. We see what we've created, a monster, right from Worcester right on up. And my address to y'all today, I don't know where you're going to get your money. Hey, I know the last time we went down there to have my medicine refill, it went up three times what it was. Medicine was at one time $45 and went to 87, and the last time we went down there to pick it up was 300 and some dollars. Hey, I couldn't call Yellow Freight or the local union, say I need more money. And that's what I'm asking you. We cannot stand no more of this taxes, taxes, taxes. And I don't know what you're going to have because you've got a hard decision, and we all got a hard decision, as you all hear it in here tonight. But until this nation turns back to God and gets this house in order, we have just seen what's going to happen, and I thank you for your time and opportunity.
Thank, I want to thank everybody for coming and speaking, for your comments and stuff. We will take advice of your comments and go over them and make the best decisions that we can make, and appreciate all of you coming. I'll now close the public hearing, and we'll take about a 10-minute recess.